Good evening, I just want to welcome everybody to our Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 15th. This is a big crowd and I think we're happy to have the kids from Mokil School here. We always like to have the young people in attendance. And just ask everybody to silence their mobile devices and all the commissioners are present tonight. And if you have to present, please speak into the microphone down at the table here. With that, I just want to say one thing, I want to congratulate Jeff Britton, Johnny Carswell, and Scott Mowee on their win in the election. We're happy to have them, let's give them a big round of applause.[41.64][41.64](APPLAUSE). And with that, we're going to ask Kevin Frederick with Pastor at Wald Edge and Presby Church to give the invocation. And after that, the kids will come up here and give the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, we gather this evening to govern. On a week after an election in our nation and in our local community, we thank you that our electoral process works, that we are a free democracy built upon the principles of justice, equality, and human rights. We pray your wisdom and blessing to guide every person elected to office in this nation. Especially, we lift this evening our elected officials who serve this county faithfully and have engendered the trust of the people. Grant them wisdom this evening as they listen to one another and to the issues, and help them to govern fairly for all the people of our county. Help them to find resolve over the difficult issues that we face. We pray also this evening, Lord, a special prayer for our county in western North Carolina under the threat of fire, with eight major fires across the western counties of this state. Be with the county fire departments, the state and federal firefighters across western North Carolina as they seek to end this plague of this terrible amount of fire that we're facing. We ask, oh God, that once again that we offer our lives to you in gratitude and thanksgiving for all you've done for us. And we offer this prayer in your strong name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. All right, kids, come on up here and right in front here and we'll do the pledge. The flag is over here and you can call, come up here. And again, Rob, we thank you for bringing these kids here. Thank you, Rob as a principal, Rob Gregory. All right.
Ready? All right.
(INAUDIBLE) [INAUDIBLE]. (APPLAUSE). (INAUDIBLE) [INAUDIBLE]. (APPLAUSE).
All right, guys, we're going to come down here and get a picture with you all. (LAUGHING). (INAUDIBLE). 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 (LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE). 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 (LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE).[411.34]
Finally, in 1954, in a unanimous decision for the case Brown versus Board of Education, the United States Supreme Court struck down its earlier decision. They declared, "Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. School segregation is unconstitutional and must end with all deliberate speed." Of course, some southern leaders delayed the process, but they would ultimately fail. The court had delivered a fatal blow to the separate but equal doctrine. With no legal foundation, the segregation laws of North Carolina and many other southern states began to fall one after the other. During this National Education Week, we celebrate all of our schools. Today, Burke's integrated public schools provide quality education for all children. They also provide a setting in which children learn to understand and respect one another. In other words, they prepare students for the real world. Today, we honor the historic legacy of the Rosenwall Schools of Burke County. We honor the early African-American educators who worked very hard with minimal resources to improve literacy and to keep their students motivated during difficult times. We honor Burke's early community leaders and local officials as they worked together to successfully build five new schools, upgraded facilities that would serve Burke County for decades. Today, Burke joins counties across North Carolina that have officially recognized their Rosenwall Schools to show how their counties chose to join an historic movement that improved millions of lives and their families and communities across the South. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Just before... Chris, you already thanked some people, but there are also... we want to thank a few other people, which Fisk University, Bruce McKesson, G&amp;G Art and Frame, Wise Cabinet Shop, and the county staff and others. And I don't know if everybody knows, Brian went out there to get for this frame. He went out to the school and took some of the wood down there. And of course, a lot of it was rotten or whatever, so we had to have it planed and whatever. But again, we thank county staff and everybody. And before the unveiling, does anybody want to come from the audience and come up and speak on... That was maybe a student there at the Rosenwall School. We have somebody with us tonight, Colee Willie Whitworth, who's 86 years old, and she went to school there. So if anybody wants to come forward, please come up and use the mic. And this is Colee coming up here, 86 years old, was a member of the Rosenwall School. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for every one of you here tonight. It's been a long time since I went to school. Boy, 1939. When I went up there, it was 1945. So I went up there for five years, and I moved back out for a while. So I had ten other brothers and sisters went there for what I did. And I'm the only one left. All of them passed. And so I'm the only one still here. So it was a good school. She teached from the first to eighth grade there. Some of them graduated there, and some of them didn't, just like I did. I didn't do them. So that's about all I remember now. I'm 77 years old myself.
Good. Thank you. Can you get up to the mic a little, please, so we can all hear?
I just thank the Lord that I'm able enough to be here to stand and witness with my brother Kenneth that we both went to that school. And Ms. Bessie P. Coperning was our teacher, and she was just as sweet as she could be. And I guess all the family, because I didn't know nobody but her. And I enjoyed going while I was going. I didn't go too long, but yet and still. I thank the Lord to be here to recognize this, her service that she did while she was in our county.
Good. Thank you.
And I just thank the Lord that he just keeps on keeping on.
Good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody else would like to say a few words? All right. And again, would all the people from the Rosenwall School please stand up, all the ones that went to the Rosenwall? Let's give them a big round of applause. All right, we're going to unveil this. I'm going to ask the commissioners to all come down here. I think this is a great thing. And let's all, commissioners, JR, let's all come down here for the unveiling. Again, come on, Ted. Well, I'll... Brian, we're going to let you unveil it. You worked hard on this.
Mr. Chairman, Bruce is here that helped us get the wood for this.
All right.
You want to come up?
Close in on the panel in a better time here. Brian, we're going to let you do the pleasure of onto on the mail. Chris, let's get in this picture here. You and Brian.
This is Bruce.
Bruce. Hi, Bruce. Good. Good to see you. Again, thank you, Brian, for all your work. This is going to be Brian in the History Museum or in the...
I locate in the History Museum.
All right.
And I'll put the plank with the community plaque information here. And then this...
Oh, it's lovely. Really, really turned out nice. When Brian told me that it was going to be 365 feet, I said, "Okay, where are we going to put it? I kind of don't have that much space. It is wonderful, and it will be a nice addition to what we've already done." We actually had some things on the Rosenwall School on the wall, but nothing as fancy as this. This is awesome. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Colee.
You've put good money into this. This is...
The wood that orders each of the pictures is actually part of the planks that we harvested from the school. And then we have the plank with the information up here. I'll wrap this up in plastic, and we'll get this to you in just a minute.
Judge, you have a few words to say?
I do. It is our honor to take this and have it come in the museum. And while I'm here, I want to say something else. You've entrusted the old police fire station to the museum, and I want to publicly thank you. I thanked you in a letter earlier, but I want to publicly thank you. We're having a fundraiser. You can give us money if you want to. That's not the reason we're here. Thursday night between 5:00 and 7:00, we're having a fundraising chicken dinner, a fast that they'll be serving. And I would like to invite the eight of you and Chris, if you'll stay, and your spouse to come as our guests for a chicken dinner to see the old annex. We call it now the museum annex. So you're invited to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Phyllis. One more round of applause. Chris, we thank you for coming up here to spend the time and follow through on this project. I know it was a long project, but thank you for presenting. Palative Care Month, and Conley Fisher-Clark is going to speak to that issue.
On behalf of Catawba Regional Hospice and all surrounding hospices in our area, we'd like to thank you for acknowledging National Hospice and Palative Care Month and for recognizing our patients in need of end-of-life care. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. And you wanted to do a picture, I believe?
Yes, please.
All right.
Yes, please.
Anybody else want to come down here on the picture? Okay, thank you so much. A round of applause for...
Chairman, we need a motion for that.
Need a motion to adopt proclamation number 216-05.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt proclamation number 2016-05.
Good. Thank you, Maynard. Everybody heard the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes 5 to 0. All right, the next thing is the presentation of financial data for the period ending September 30th, 216, for Burke County Public Schools. And Keith Lawson, is he here?
I don't see him, Mr. Chairman.
Keith is not here. All right, I guess there's nobody to make that presentation. I guess we'll have to take that at a later date. The other, number four, is Western Piedmont Community College. They're going to also present financial data for the period ending September 30th. Sandy?
Thank you very much. Want to briefly go over the first quarter financial statements for Western Piedmont Community College. And we are going to look at the first three columns, which is our state funds. We have a formula budget of $14,637,780 with additional allocations of $365,286 for total budget at September 30th of $15,3,066. Through September 30th, we've received $3,536,39 and spent $3,251,868, or 21.7% of our budget through the first quarter. If you'll look in the next three columns, this is our county budget with actual expenditures through September 30th. Our current budget is $2,544,329. We have received $431,427 of our budget with expenditures of $607,348. The negative operating cash is just due to a timing difference as we received the September appropriation on October the 3rd. And this represents 23.9% of our county budget. The last three columns you see is our institutional funds, which is everything else that is not county or state appropriated. This includes our federal, state, our student financial aid, our grants, self-supporting courses, our bookstore, and other miscellaneous accounts. Most of these accounts are restricted in nature as to their designations. Approximately 75% is our student financial aid, and then another 15% for bookstore operations. Our next slide will show a breakdown of expenditure categories for county expenditures. The major expenditure items are salaries and benefits at 23%, utilities at 26%, and insurance at 20%. And as you remember, this year, we did outsource the custodial services, so that amount is in services versus salaries and benefits this year. But this is comparative to normal time this year for the first quarter. You don't spend as much in the first quarter as you move throughout the year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions for Sandy? Good. I guess there's none, and we'll accept that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, there's not any scheduled public hearings tonight. Informal public comments, has anybody signed up to speak? So there's nobody here that wants to speak tonight. And with that, we'll go to consent agenda, and the first three items are the county clerk.
Well, I'll go ahead and do your...
All right. You have, Brian?
Yes, sir. Item one, clerk merging the adult care and nursing home committees together. Item two, clerk regionally appointments. Item three, clerk appointments to the council on aging. Item four, clerk recreation commission removal. Item five, community development water mill access area withdrawal from the 2003 agreement MOA with the new NCWRC and joint letter from Burke County and the town of Glen Alpine to Duke Energy in reference to the Catawba Water Tree Project, FERC number 2232, CRA 10.27.4.3, funding fulfillment. Item six, county manager, enter county agreement for housing of out-of-county inmates in Alexander County. Item seven, finance, financial advisory services. Item eight, health department birth control and immunization fee schedule changes for fiscal 2016-17. Item nine, tax department EMS collections report for September 2016. Item 10, tax department tax collection report for October 2016. And item 11, tax department release refund report for October 2016. That concludes your consent.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? If not, I'll be happy to accept the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Go move, Chairman.
Thank you, Jack. Jack made the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes 5 to 0. That takes us down to our one item for decision tonight, and this is on mobile home parks to clean up. And with that, we'll ask JR to comment on the decision items tonight.
Gentlemen, if you recall...
Chair.
Gentlemen, if you recall, back in our October pre-agenda, we were discussing mobile home parks and the use of state grants to help clean them up. And at the time, the commissioners indicated that some interest in some particularly egregious examples of mobile home parks where the mobile homes were falling apart and creating an attractive nuisance for children, a danger, and an eyesore. Two of them that were brought to the board's attention then were one located on Riverbend Road and then one located off of Bertmont Road on Charlie Crawley Road. And we had discussed before the possibility of bringing suit to have the uninhabitable mobile homes declared a nuisance and have the owners ordered by court to abate the nuisance by removing the mobile homes. At that time, we were introduced to the Husse's, to Mr. and Ms. Huss, who are doing their best to acquire the Riverbend Road mobile home park. They had, at the time, gone in there and reestablished water, reestablished, I believe, trash pickup, paid the taxes, and cleaned the place up. I think they may be here tonight.
Yes, they are. They're in the audience.
If you want to hear from them, because at our last meeting, we decided to table it and to see if they were able to acquire the property and what else they were able...
JR, I think they provided us with pictures and photographs of what's going on. I think everybody should have that. And I mean, what I see there, and I think everybody sees, I mean, it's that they've really worked hard to fix this up. And I mean, some of these places look like high-end hotels, you know. I mean, they're really doing a good job. And I don't know, did everybody get a chance to look at these? But if the Husse's would like to come up to the microphone, please come. But I think they're doing a great job from what I see. And that leaves just the other park.
The other park. And that one is, of course, has been foreclosed upon and is now owned by a bank out of Georgia. And in preparation for this meeting, received an email from Steve Carpenter, Scott Carpenter, who's out of town, who suggests that the commissioners allow the mobile home nuisance process to begin with community development. Let them be the first contact to the owner.
All right.
And see what power of persuasion they have to, rather than engaging a lawyer immediately, let them see what power they have to get the owner to clean it up. And then if that's not successful, then they would refer it on to the county attorney for a bigger gun.
All right. Questions for JR?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment or two. I drove by Riverbend on the way in. I left the house a few minutes early. But in studying this and looking at comments that we made during the work session, on page 230, you'll find section 902 of the requirements. And I think in reading those requirements, I'm not sure we're in compliance. It says that the Board of Commissioners should have an authorized official shall state in writing the board's finding and the determination. And then, as been brought up a couple of times, that after they contact them, they have 90 days to do something. And it continues with the instructions that the county shall take with that. If they fail to comply with the order, the county shall take any action it deems reasonably necessary to dispose of the abandoned manufactured homes. And what I was going to suggest, or at least throw out the idea of, that there's some homes down there that are not repairable. You're going to have to remove them evidently. And I think we need to get a plan of action, if you will, from the new owners. And that plan of action is what they intend to do, and the timetable they're going to do it, so that we know and that the community knows that we are... And they can't do it overnight. None of us here can expect them to... They've done a lot of work, and it looks a whole lot better. There's still a lot of trash there, a lot of raw trash there that needs to be cleaned up. But I think the least we can expect from them is a written plan of action on their behalf. Now, I would suggest that. JR, you're the legal advisor, but I think all of us, I know I am, I'm willing to give them some time...
Right.
...to bring it up to par, to fix it. But we need to know that timetable, I think. I think we deserve to know that timetable.
Well, that's the purpose of the ordinance, and that's what community development would be starting with.
Okay. So Scott would start working on that, then JR?
That would be my recommendation to y'all, that you immediately have Scott's community development begin.
Right.
On your... May I?
Go ahead.
On your behalf, is that reasonable for y'all? Can y'all get us a plan for, and a timetable? Okay.
Any questions, again, for JR or Brian on this issue? So JR, do we need a motion on this? Or what's... And if we do, what would be the suggested motion?
I would suggest a motion to ask community development to move forward with the Charlie Crawley Mobile Home Park in contacting the owner and having the nuisance abated.
All right. Who would like to make that motion?
I would like to make it, but add, if I may, that Scott get back to us with that plan.
Right.
That we get a copy of that plan, and that we need to be reminded at the date that these things are supposed to be improved, so we can, again, look at it and make plans.
Is that fine, JR?
Yes, sir.
All right. So you all heard the motion by Maynard. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes, again, 5 to 0. Thank you. Well, that is our one item for decision tonight. And the next thing is reports and comments. And the first one is Mr. Paul Imes, our finance director, and he's going to report on the final financial report for the period ending September 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first sheet that you have reflects the general fund as of September 30th. You see the total budget is approximately $81.8 million in revenues. There's three categories. First two are the items that the board really has the most flexibility in the use of those funds, property taxes and sales tax. The property tax number is roughly $26.8 million through the first quarter. That's slightly ahead of last year at the same time. Sales tax, roughly a million and a half, although it shows a little bit under the 25% percentage. I would bring to your attention, the sales tax this year is really comprised of two components, the regular sales tax, like we've always received, and then the new sales tax allocation from the legislative redistribution of funds. And that number is almost $1.4 million. That is a set number, so we will receive that, although the timing of that in these numbers only reflects one month's worth of those funds. So if you sort of take that number out and look at the regular sales tax, we're actually a little bit above 26% for the first quarter. So we're in really good shape there, although if you look at the 22.4%, you know, it doesn't reflect the true picture of that, just from a timing standpoint. On the expenditure side, and I won't bother to go down through each of those departments, but the same $81.8 million, at the end of the first quarter, we've expended roughly $20.5 million, which is exactly 25% of the budget. If you go back through some of the larger ones, you'll see, you know, they aren't all reflective of a true 25%, but that is because of the timing of certain issues like debt service, which is one of the larger ones, for example. Anyway, it shows that we're at 66% spent, but that, again, is just because of the timing on when the debt payments are due. So, again, overall, we're on track, 25%. There's nothing really out of the ordinary here that I think is worth noting. Pre-agenda, I did point out the medical examiner budget was one I was concerned with. Since then, I've received another month's worth of bills, so we are running higher than normal on that. And so we may end up, before the year's over, needing to put some money, move some money into that category. But that is really beyond our control. It's just a matter of how many autopsies, you know, the medical examiners perform. So, again, that's the only thing I would want to point out at this juncture. And on the second page, the three enterprise funds are presented. Water and Sewer, revenue is right at 25%. Solid Waste Disposal, if you see the revenues, they're above 25%, but that's sort of like property tax. That's reflective of when the tax bills are paid, because the largest revenue stream in this budget is the fee on the tax bill for property disposal fee. So that's, you know, a little bit over the one quarter, still in good shape. On the expense side, we're a little bit under 25%. Solid Waste Collection budget is funded entirely from solid waste disposal, and the money is transferred, whatever's necessary to cover expenses. So in the first quarter there, expenditures are only $123,000. So we're in good shape in that fund. So overall, we're on track, somewhere where we were last year, nothing really out of the ordinary. And I'll entertain any questions anyone may have.
All right. Questions for Paul?
No, not for me.
All right.
Need a motion to accept this report?
I moved.
Thank you, Maynard. You all heard the motion by Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that passes 5 to 0. Madam Clerk, item two is the Board of Commissioners Committee reports. We'll start with Johnny down there.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In your package, you have my report from the library. Jim always gives us a very exhaustive report and a good report, and nothing wrong with the library. It's getting bigger every month. I attended the Burke Cooperative Water Board meeting today. Taps are growing with everybody, so that's a good sign on the building process in the county. A number of the members of the board are beginning projects to redo water pipes. Some of their lines are old, and so they're waiting on some grant monies, and they're going to be redoing some water lines.
Good. Thank you, Johnny. Maynard?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. All of you got a copy of the air quality meeting. It was moved up to December because of scheduling conflicts. I did want to share just a couple of highlights from the agricultural committee meeting. One of them that I'm very interested in, and you'll know... One of them that I'm very interested in, and, and you'll know when I read it, that we've been championed for this for some time. But their committee rank for the goal number one was to support state funding and staffing for agricultural research cooperative extension service and other agriculture-related efforts to support the largest segment of our industry. And the second one, support legislative allowing counties to partner with neighboring counties to multi-juridicial regional agricultural business district that allow for favor and incentives to attract agriculture business to the region. And part of that, we have had some discussion in closed sessions, that some of this industry needs more than just one county to pull fund from resources for the Grow and Agricultural Committee. Parks and Recreation, it is scheduled, you got a report on the last one, and the next one's scheduled for Thursday. I'd like to advise you that Deanna Gates has been hired as the Secretary of Reception for the Parks and Recreation. And we're going to have Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday. And in mental health, that meeting has not yet been held for this month. It happens Thursday night. And I was just noticing Judge.
Sit.
Yeah, a comment about being up at, but we, I won't be able to make it. I'll be at that meeting. And that's all, thank you.
Travel and tourism is doing well in Burke County. Our occupancy tax sales are up and, which is good. And out at the airport, we've built some new hangars. We've got a lot of new planes out there, and we're probably going to have to build another bank of, of hangars. But everything is going good on both of those boards. Jeff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past month, I met with the Social Services Board and also the EMS Quality Management Committee. And I'd just like to take just a moment to, to recognize that group. They do a great job for us all the time, and I always appreciate them coming together as different disciplines, our EMS folks, our fire folks, our rescue folks. And I know we all take them for granted a lot of times, and we, we think those guys are just sitting around waiting on a call. But over the last quarter, these numbers are staggering, really. Our EMS answered 4,149 calls. Our fire departments, and remember, many of these, most of these, our volunteer guys answered 3,543 calls. Our rescue groups answered 777 calls. So these guys do a tremendous work for us all the time, and I just want to commend them, and I would encourage our citizens to thank them whenever you have the opportunity to do that. And, and Brian may say more about our fire situation, but I'd just remind, again, thank our folks who are helping fight all the fires in our area. And again, remind our citizens to be of assistance any way that we can with that.
Good, thank you. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, two of my committees I still sit on will haven't had a meeting this month. I didn't make the JCPC. But I have some comments I'd like to make while I'm here, and it's my last meeting. It's been a, a good period, period of my life, the two terms, two terms I've served on this board. I've enjoyed it. But there's a lot more to do, and I just hope the commissioners will carry on what they're doing. Maxine went out and got K show appreciation, a little token gift. I thought about getting you guys one, but you know, what is material things? They go away, so I decided to give you some advice instead of getting you a gift, because advice goes a long way sometimes if you listen to people. But I thought about that, too. Over the last four years, I've tried to advise you quite a bit, but a lot of you don't pay attention to me in that, in that respect, but that's okay. There's always 18, and I, I don't have any plans to go anywhere until then. So I've enjoyed it, and I have no regrets. Thank you.
Good. And with that, rather, I got one item from staff. Any comments from staff? Brian, JR?
If you want to go ahead first.
You want to do it, go ahead. Well, let's do this. Come on, Jack, let's come down here. Maxine, come up here, and we're kind of got a little presentation for you.
Vegetation.
Come on, Maxine. Maybe, Debbie, you can get a shot of this, please. But I just want to present this Black Hugh Jack for your years of service. Thank you for being a good friend, and a good commissioner. And I'm saying, hey, not everybody listens to you, but I don't know if everybody listens to us. It's been a pleasure serving with you these years, and it's just, you know, I'm truly going to miss you. I know I'm going to see you a lot, but I truly miss you, and I guess you're just going to get in Maxine's way. Maxine will probably go crazy. Good, thank you. Come to the table there. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. And with that, I think, any comments from staff? Brian?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've got some, some recent pictures of the construction project at the Hildebrand Library Senior Center. And we can just click through those. You can see some of the steel structures going up, a couple of different views of that. There's some workmen there in one of the scenes. Then we have a picture of one of our firefighters there in the wildfire, and some there in the park area. And then this is apparently an aerial view of the fire. I want to take an opportunity, our, our new Fire Marshal Emergency Management Director is here, Mike Willis. And Mike, if you and the gentlemen that are with you and ladies, if you want to come up and do a brief report to the commissioners as to what's happening with the fire and efforts to put the fire out, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, members of the board. I don't know that I ever started a job out quite this dynamic, but it's, it's been, been a good challenge. I'm happy to be here. Just to give you a little bit of, of history of the last eight days, Burke County firefighters have answered 287 calls for smoke investigations, report of, of outside fires and illegal burns. So those three call groups together, in seven days, they have run 287 calls. So we're out there. Not all of those have, have turned into anything, but that, that's kind of where we're at. I'd like to introduce to you three gentlemen that are working in support of, of our operation on South Mountain. The, the initial crew that came in from the Forest Service, what we consider a top three team, that started, incident management team that started this incident and, and began the ball rolling as, as a formal qualified incident that we actually have to manage. Mr. John Howard, I'll let him say a few words to you. This incident evolved into a need for a top-two incident management team, and the Forest Service has Mr. John Kern. He is the incident commander now for the team that's in place at this time. It's a green team out of Florida. And I'd also like to introduce Mr. Mike Cook. Mike is the Western Branch Manager for North Carolina Emergency Management. So I'll let these gentlemen talk to you.
Good evening. My name is John Howard. I was the initial incident commander called in to kind of bridge the gap. We knew pretty early on. I'm actually from Hillsborough, North Carolina. And just to kind of a state of the union and how we came to have Florida folks coming up here fighting fires, of course, the historic drought that we have. About 50%, maybe a little over 50% of all the people east of here are now up in the mountains battling various fires all across the state. The local folks have been, have, have come to the stage where they, they, they can't do it alone. And so we've mobilized a lot of our forces from, from the east and have pushed them here. Even with that, not enough manpower to handle all the different blazes that are going across western North Carolina. So, so we've, we've got folks coming into this fire from all across the country, Alaska I saw last night, Pennsylvania, various states all across the country. And we have cooperative agreements with other states, and so when things get really bad, we go help them, they come help us. We've been to Florida in the past as an agency, and, and now they've, they've returned the favor to us. But pretty, pretty historic conditions. What would normally work for us in, in most years is, is not working now, and you guys can see the, the evidence of that on the horizon. But we are working hard with, with, with incident management teams, emergency management, trying to, trying to get more, more resources from across the country to come here. So anyway, I'll let John give the update on the fire unless you guys have a question for, for us, for me.
Any questions, sir? All right, good, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman and Board. My name is John Kern with the Florida Forest Service, and we're up here to help out. We were requested by North Carolina Forestry to help out. As you know, it was mentioned earlier, at least eight large fires in this area has really taxed their ability to handle fires locally. Florida has certainly been in that same boat and had to call in outside agencies. There is a state-to-state agreement where we can come on up here quite easily without having to go through lots of extra hoops of working through the federal system and hiring and filling orders. We can go pretty close contacts state to state. So we're taking advantage of those pre-existing arrangements there. And we're also leaning heavily on our local folks out here to help us with on-the-ground expertise, and we look at them as our eyes and ears, and we really do listen to their advice quite closely when we come up here and fight fire in somebody else's yard. So an update of what we got going out there right now, up on the screen, we've got the latest, and that was from overnight, last night. Infrared imagery, plane flies over, looks down with its sensors, and was able to tell us that the fire is about 4,600 acres. The brightest red on there indicates the hottest portions of the fire, and other areas have just isolated smoldering stumps and things like that that the imagery will also pick up. So you can see the major areas of concern are where the fire is moving to the north and to the east, up around Bob Knob and Obie's Knob up there in the northeast. And then also to the west, out towards the game lands there is also another area of our major concern there, because there's a lot of opportunity for fire spread that direction, very few trails to build lines off of, very few roads to provide access. So it's much more rural there. But again, all the improvements are up on that northern portion, so of course, our efforts have been concentrated there today. And we actually talk a little bit more about some of that activity that's been going on up there specifically. So that is the fire in a nutshell. We have got about 30% containment on it. Containment comes in the form of roads that have been widened somewhat either by hand crews that are on scene or bulldozers pushing them open and then maintained with leaf blowers as well as fire trucks, brush trucks and engines, maintaining those and using counterfire to light those edges that move towards the wildfire, removing the fuel so that it can't come out those areas. So much of that red line where there isn't any heat around it is areas that have been controlled, and we're considering those fairly secure at this time, still monitoring them because the leaf fall is happening and could cause a reburn, they call it, coming from one of those hot dots you see there and challenging the line. So we need folks to keep patrolling the lines. But that's going on. So cost to date, as of yesterday afternoon, about $250,000 have been spent on this fire captured by our team and orders. There's been additional cost to that from crews that have come in on a daily basis from the North Carolina Forest Service and report back to their station. So there's actually more cost to that. Our critical resources that we've been asking for and have been receiving to some degree are air resources. We've had what they call single-engine air tankers or seats, airplanes that can drop retardant. Just today, they dropped 15 drops of retardant for about 12,000 gallons of retardant out there to help secure the areas to the north and also out to that west side there. We've also had a helicopter on scene today, along with about 179 personnel. That includes folks helping out with the incident management team as well as firefighters and other specialists up on the scene. So probably by the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have over 200 people helping with this fire. And as John said there, yeah, we do have them from all over the country. They include dozers, engines and hand crews, lots of North Carolina State Forest Service folks out there helping out. They're staying in the fight, providing us that expertise certainly, and we appreciate that. The overhead team that has come in, we help organize the situation. We come in with an operations branch that says where the firefighter should go and help prioritize things, help manage the air operations, finance to keep track of all the personnel and make sure the billing gets handled after the fact. Planning sections to put together incident action plans each day that have got group assignments and objectives and maps and charts and things that the firefighters need out there to provide safety briefings, and we have safety officers, logistics folks to help get the meals out to them, the water, the fuel that they all need. So to keep things running smoothly, it's quite a little operation that you can imagine we've got going out there. Things are going well. They're getting better. We are in a historic drought, as you know. Fuels are drier now than they are on 97% of the days. They call it the 97th percentile, so almost as dry as they've ever been for this day, those fuels are. So it takes a lot to put them out, and they will not be going out anytime soon. We will have it there certainly for weeks to come. We're hoping to be successful and get lines around it over the next week or so, but that all depends on the weather. This weekend's supposed to have very windy conditions and just, you know, the challenges of it being so dry out there. Each day, we have had spots across our fire line, and then we have to fall back to new contingency line and allow the fire to grow and do more counterfire. So that's been going on. So smoke will be part of your environment here, I'm afraid. And we're going to have a planning on a community meeting to help share some of this information with the citizens here. We're hoping to do that later on this week. We'll get you some times and dates when it works for facilities and for us to be able to present some of this information so that the community can know just what's going on out there. And I would like to say, kind of in closing there, one of my most significant impressions out here along with the dry fuels is the great outpouring of support from the community. I have personally been on fires from, two summers ago on coast in California, Montana, Idaho, fires in Nevada. I've been in North Carolina previously and certainly all over the southeast in Florida for 29 years and have never seen anywhere close to the community's support from at the gas stations to stoplights, people rolling down their windows. When we go to dinner, people are just, "Thanks for coming by. Thank you for coming by." And we say, "Well, you know, we're just returning the favor," like John said there. But it comes in the form of just kind greetings and well wishes, prayers and thoughts, but also in donations. We're receiving lots of water. The Florida guys are appreciating the knit caps toboggans, I guess we're calling them up here, because 30 some odd degrees in the morning is about to send these guys back to the house or, or maybe disincentivize them for putting the fire out, quite frankly, early in the morning. But we'll, we'll make sure we keep them warm with those donations, just, you know, really heartfelt thoughts is really what we need out there. We've got the ability to, to give them the supplies that they need, but you just can't help this, how engaged the community is, and that speaks to the local folks who have set up that relationship. And we're here to help build that relationship, continue it on, and we just want to say thank you for allowing us into your community and just kind of say thank you back for, for those well wishes that we've received.
Good, thank you so much for what you all are doing. Any questions for the gentleman? If not, a big thank you for what you're all doing. Thank you so much.
And thank you all for having such a great community, the great organization set up to, to let us hit the ground running and make great successes.
Good, thank you. Anybody else need to speak?
Just real quick, like, and Mike Cook, the North Carolina Emergency Management, I'm Western Branch Manager, and certainly we, we're seeing a historic year in many ways from the flooding we've had in eastern North Carolina after Matthew to the fires here. And the struggles we're having is, is this is a situation where they're pulling resources all the way, Georgia is demanding them, South Carolina's demanding them. We're getting ready to have a slop over from a fire into North Carolina. And a report I got last night, as the fire's coming out of Georgia, was moving a mile a day. And so, so with that in, in mind, we're, I have to support all of western North Carolina. Certainly, I'm here in Burke County helping Mike this week, having to adjust our plans. I got a big team, big footprint down in Rutherford County. But we're going to be here to support you. We're going to find the resources, and we're going to reach out to other states if we have to, to make it happen. Hopefully, we can get some, some water coming our way and, and resolve this problem, and next year, we'll, we'll be back to saying, "I lived historic 2016."
Good, thank you, guys, for all you do. We really appreciate. We really appreciate you all. Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Brian, you have anything?
I was going to say something else.
You want to go through the events and the dates for, you want to read the upcoming events, Kay, before you go into your vacancy announcements?
Sure. We have a reception for incoming and outgoing elected officials, November 23rd, from 5:15 to 6:15. Room. County offices will be closed November 24th and 25th for Thanksgiving. The board's organizational meeting will be held December 5th at 2:00. The board's pre-agenda meeting is also December 5th at 3:00 p.m., which is a Monday. The Morganton Christmas Parade is December 15th. The regular meeting in December is on the 20th, and county offices will be closed December 23rd, 26th and 27th for Christmas.
Good, thank you, Kay, and you can go right into your vacancy announcements.
Okay. We have the following opportunities for citizens to serve on boards and committees, the Hickory Regional Planning, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board for the ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, the Burke County Board of and Planning Board, the Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Board, and Partners Behavioral Health Management.
Good, thank you, Kay. All right, we're going to need a closed session tonight to discuss a threatened or pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss economic development matters and to discuss personnel matters, and you all see the motion there to go in closed session. I'll be happy if somebody would make that motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Maynard. Again, all of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign, that passes five to zero. Let's, before we go into closed session, take about a five to 10 minute break, and then we'll go into our chambers for closed session. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was also to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or con.
Right, thank you. All right. All right, we had a motion to come out of closed session. We didn't take any action there. However, we did announce the approval of closed session meeting minutes of, everybody should have a copy of 214, 215 and 216 minutes. With that, I'd be happy to ask for a motion to approve this closed session meeting here. We need, we don't need it because we, you had the motion, all right, so we just stand as we are then. Motion to exit. All right, all those in favor, let's go home and wait our seat.